I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chairperson Bosher.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Colling.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Tomacek.
President.
Commissioner Mayo will be absent. Commissioner Zhang.
Present.
And Commissioner Torres will also be absent. And I would like to make a note that Counselor John Vols has joined us. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So Dunn, Mayo, Torres are all absent, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we have, it looks like we have a... A second here. Looks like we have a quorum. So Commissioner Zhang, you will be voting tonight. I will entertain a motion at this time for approval of minutes of the meeting for the 23rd of June. Do we have a... Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Commissioner McConnell, all right, can we get a roll call, please, for the vote? I vote aye.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Aye.
Vice Chair McConnell votes aye. Commissioner Carpenter.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter votes yea. Commissioner Colling.
Yea.
Commissioner Colling votes yea. Commissioner Tomacek.
Yea.
Commissioner Tomacek votes yea. Commissioner Zhang.
Yea.
Commissioner Zhang votes yea. Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously and the minutes are approved. We have a presentation tonight. Oh, but first we have to close the meeting. Do we need a motion for that, Jennifer?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Do we need a roll call, or can we just all do a verbal?
Verbal vote, thank you.
I vote aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. We now have a presentation from Andrew Spurgeon. Andrew, it's all yours.
Thank you Chair Bosher, and thank you Commissioners for this opportunity to present. Most of you know me, but I am Andrew Spurgeon. I'm the Long Range Planner in Community Development. We appreciate the opportunity to brief the Commission today, and I want to thank the Commission members who we saw attend some of the Westminster Forward public events last year. For today's presentation, I plan to provide you with an update on policy formation of the future comprehensive plan, and then get into some of the key topic areas that have been identified for the preliminary goals and policies to guide the city into the future. And if I may, if I can ask, is, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, I'll keep going then. Next slide, Matt, thank you. I realize that this background material has been presented to the Commission previously, but I did want to share this slide just as a reminder that Westminster Forward is a coordinated effort to create a family of plans for the city, including this updated comprehensive plan, a consolidated Parks, Recreation and Libraries Plan, the city's first sustainability plan, a combined transportation and mobility plan, an updated water supply plan, and also a new development code to ensure we have standards that support these plans that constitute Westminster Forward. To be clear, Westminster Forward itself is not a product, but it's the coordination of these cities' long-term plans to create the framework for future planning. Next slide, please. This slide shows the general policy framework for the family of Westminster Forward plans. The comprehensive plan is going to address these planning themes, but the main focus in the comprehensive plan will be on land use and development, utilities and resources, housing and neighborhoods, and economic and financial resilience. But we will also be introducing the concepts for mobility and connections, and health and wellness for further policy development by means of the Transportation Mobility Plan and the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Plan. Next slide. Again, this is a slide you've probably seen before, but we like to use this image to remind people of the interrelatedness of the Westminster Forward plans, and the need to ensure we are aligned and complement each other as we plan for the future. Next slide, please. So starting with this slide, we have the primary material that I want to share with the Planning Commission tonight and receive your feedback. Next slide. This slide, just as a reminder of what the comprehensive plan is and why we have one. The plan is long-term in nature, generally with a 20-year planning horizon, which is why I sometimes call it the Westminster 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We do like to update it to reflect new information, changes in priorities, new technologies, and the changing complexion of the city's demographics. I also want to clarify that the comprehensive plan is much more than a land use plan. We know that the land use map is is a part of the plan that this Commission probably thinks about the most often, but the comprehensive plan does a lot more than that. We will have goals and policies that really try to provide a roadmap for residents, businesses, developers, and decision-makers over the years ahead. And of course, that would include decision-makers like the Planning Commission as well as our City Council. Next slide. This slide shows a generalized timeline of the planning processes and outreach phases that have occurred. We determined that in 2019 alone, there were 19 different events as described in Attachment 2 to the Agenda Memo, building on six events in 2018 and five online surveys that occurred through this time. So where are we now? Right now, we're over on the right side of the spectrum there, beginning the plan document drafting with goals and policies for the Westminster Forward themes that we talked about a minute ago. Later this year, we do hope to go out for additional public review pending what is feasible in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, and then initiate additional discussions with Planning Commission and City Council as the plan is more finalized. Next slide, please. For purposes of considering appropriate planning for the areas of the city with either the largest vacant parcels or areas where we anticipate redevelopment, we identified nine character areas across the city. This task was meant to support both the comprehensive plan and the parallel effort to create the development code with identification of preferred land uses, building types, civic and amenity concepts to create special places. Each of the nine areas had individual results as a result of Westminster Forward outreach. I do also want to help explain, however, the intent is not to impose these type of development patterns citywide, but to distinguish those areas of the city that are generally expected to remain stable versus these strategic locations where a degree of future change is expected. The character areas, all nine of them together, are just under 12% of the city's land area, meaning that over 88% of the city's land area would remain stable. Next slide, please. The initial character area work was supplemented by additional outreach, primarily the activities we did in 2019. As a result of that outreach, we did identify some common themes and some unique ideas that we're trying to incorporate as we're beginning the plan. Preferences for mixed-use development patterns, although being careful not to place that everywhere. Interest in a diversity of housing types, but supported by nearby activities such as restaurants and neighborhood-oriented retail. Interest in changing, interest in addressing the changing demographics and being inclusive. The need to adapt retail areas to changing consumer preferences and behaviors. And recognizing the need to be more sustainable and to plan for a finite water supply, which will come in the form of thoughtful planning for infrastructure to match development needs, and looking at opportunities for greater water conservation. Next slide, please. Based on Westminster Forward input and the key, and the key themes we talked about on the previous slide, we've identified a series of guiding principles for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. I'll let you read this for yourself, but when you consider these principles collectively, it leads us to a vision for the plan to provide for balanced growth to support a thriving and healthy community comprised of great neighborhoods. So these guiding principle topics I have actually put in the header throughout the slideshow, just as a reminder of those principles as we talk about some of the additional planned topic areas. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to review the main themes being addressed by the proposed goals and policies, starting with the land use and development theme, which I realize has some of the greatest level of interest. To organize feedback we received through Westminster Forward, we did try to group topics as shown here as the basis for goals and policies for the plan draft. Again, I'll let you read these for yourself, but really the idea with land use and development is to recognize that in Westminster, we have open lands, low-density areas, and higher-density areas, and varying gradients in between to form a series of zones. Also, the proposed policies will address retail adaptation, place-making, building on a focus area concept from the existing comprehensive plan, and really thinking about how to activate these areas and incorporating sustainability considerations into future development or redevelopment. Some of the concepts in this presentation you will see repeated in several themes, and this was intentional to ensure that discussions on each planning theme considered related topics. And then with the final document, we'll try to group common topics in just one place. I would invite you to stop and ask questions if there is any content on the slides that you would like to understand better. Next slide, please. Again, I'll let you read this slide on your own, and feel free to stop and ask about anything you see here. But I'll highlight a few items that have arisen through discussions relative to the economic and financial resilience theme. As with the land use and development theme, the plan will continue the focus area concept as well as thinking about infill and redevelopment opportunities to include consideration of key commercial corridors and place-making to support the city's livability as part of its locational advantage. Part of this is really thinking about the city's place in the region and the system that we're part of. Westminster is not out by itself. We are part of a interconnected urban area. Next slide, please. With the housing and neighborhoods theme, we want to address some of the recommendations of the Affordable and Workforce Housing Strategic Plan and continue to promote great neighborhoods in all areas of the city. This includes recognition of low-density suburban areas and more urban areas with a spectrum of housing types. We want to think about neighborhoods and the collective elements that form a neighborhood, such as housing, civic spaces, access to services, linkages to transportation, as well as Westminster's extensive park, open space, and trail system. With the year 2040 planned horizon, we're trying to anticipate the future needs of the city. For example, we know that the population of those over age 60 increased 57% since 2010, and this is expected to greatly increase with the baby boomer population. Westminster is also becoming a more diverse community with both the Asian community and Latinx community. The Latinx community alone is over 23% of the city's population. So with the plan, we'll be thinking about how do we plan for neighborhoods that meet the daily needs of all residents. Next slide, please. With utilities and resources, with this theme, we really think about how can we continue stewardship of our water supply through both planning and water conservation. We think about planning ahead for future infrastructure, including replacement of aging parts of the system, also updating stormwater considerations to align with the more recent focus on water quality and green infrastructure. And finally, thinking about some of the non-city utilities for issues such as access to broadband, particularly in light of the current COVID pandemic and people working from home or people trying to learn from home. Next slide, please. This slide shows additional planned sections where alignment with us with other Westminster Forward plans is critical. We want to introduce the mobility and connections theme in the comprehensive plan, but then work with the Transportation Mobility Plan where more specific actions would be housed. The topics to include in what we are calling health and wellness, which on here is outdoors and wellness, that was a recent change. We're calling health and wellness. This has grown to include some other city services, including public safety. Again, introducing some of these topics in the comprehensive plan, and then deferring some more specific actions to the Parks, Recreation, and Library Plan or individual department strategic plans. We will be coordinating with the school districts on future needs resulting from the final land use map. But interestingly, our initial discussions with all three districts so far, there's actually anticipation of a declining future school enrollment due to both the aging population and a falling birth rate. We also have identified a way to consolidate public art policies in one place in the document. And very importantly, we do plan to address public safety relative to both police and fire protection services, as well as relating to concepts identified in the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan. Some of the content shown here really begins to touch on some of the areas that differ from the existing comprehensive plan, particularly the addition of health and wellness-related goals and policies such as food access, greater discussion of emergency management, healthcare capacity, and human services. Next slide, please. This is another slide I'll let you read for yourself, but I wanted to take a moment to recap for you our proposed approach to incorporate feedback we received through Westminster Forward that will generate new planned content as compared to the existing comprehensive plan. And then in the second part, introducing some additional items that city staff has identified based on what we know about COVID-19 so far. Some of the community needs that we've identified that we believe transcend just this current pandemic, and potential actions we could take to ensure preparedness for future hazard events, whether it's pandemics, disasters, or other emergency-type situations. And so this is the point that Jennifer did bring up prior to the start of the meeting, where we'd like to ask each Planning Commissioner, if you have potential suggestions about considerations we should be incorporating relative to COVID-19 and our changing world that we could include with this 20-year-long comprehensive plan. So Jennifer, if it's okay, we can just ask the Chair to round robin call on each Commissioner, and each of you could then make a comment or suggestion for us to consider relative to the current situation and things you you've may have seen or have been wondering about that we could turn into policy with the future plan.
Okay, with that in mind, I will just call each Commissioner and give them a moment to respond, and they can take as much time as they wish. So turn on your microphone when I call your name, and if you have any questions or comments, go ahead and do it then. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of comments. Yeah, first, thank you to the staff for giving us this update. I appreciate that. Secondly, especially in regards with the COVID-19 situation. You know, I notice almost all of our feedback is from 2018 or from earlier years. And considering that it seems spread a lot more in cities that are more dense, we may want to look at allowing less density, especially if the virus is something we're going to have to live with, that are keeping less dense and not, and not going towards the new urban center that we've been going for for the last 10 years or so. So that's, that's my first comment, is that we probably should, should look at that because I have a feeling the market for housing is going to, is going to change to reflect this. This is people are feeling less comfortable in living in an urban setting versus our, versus our more suburban setting with more elbow room. Also, I, you know, I know you just are glancing on everything, but, you know, when we're talking about transportation, we really, I always hammer this home because it seems we talk about connectivity, but we don't really talk about expanding our streets and roads. There's enough capacity there, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, that we're still looking at, you know, vehicle transportation, automobile transportation that takes care of well more than 90% of trips. So as long as we're taking care of those, I'm glad you're paying attention to the water system. That's very important as well as we move forward and with the changing climate and everything else. But those are, those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Tomacek.
I was looking back at the, the maps of possible redevelopment and things like that, and the, the COVID-19 consideration, a further consideration of declining retail. I'm wondering if that shouldn't be a greater focus than it has been in the discussions we've heard this far. And I only say that because we were seeing a fair amount of declining retail in big-box kind of environments to begin with, and redevelopment of those lands could be used for a whole lot better purpose than just putting more retail in of smaller assets back in their place. I'm not entirely convinced that it's the businesses that are the problem. Oftentimes, it's the mix or the, the locations that seem to be problematic. Healthcare capacity seems to be an interesting thing, too, along those same lines. Having lost St. Anthony's North as an emergency response center and the sort of coming and going of some of the emergent care facilities doesn't give us really the, the capacity that we probably need. So building that in better as a focus area might be helpful. Those are my two points.
Thank you. Commissioner Zhang.
Just reiterating what the previous Commissioners have mentioned, especially what Commissioner Tomacek mentioned about healthcare facility centers with St. Anthony's North no longer operating as it used to, so just considerations of that. That's, that's my part.
Thank you. Commissioner McConnell.
I don't know, can you guys hear me now? I can't get my camera working.
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay. It's probably better for you that my camera's not working, actually, but, you know, that's how it goes. All right, so I'm sure you guys have already, already said a couple of these things. I heard Commissioner Tomacek talking about declining retail and some about St. Anthony's North. I agree with the notion that it has been declining, retail has been for quite a while, and I, and I think that the past four months have done nothing but exacerbate that. There's going to be, have to be new ways of doing all kinds of different businesses in, in ways that we're not doing them quite yet. But then also, I'd like to say that in the, the topics identified in the Westminster Forward Outreach section there, to me, it seems like food access is a rather broad and general term. Right? To some people, food access is sufficient number of drive-throughs. Right? Food access is Uber Eats or DoorDash or something else. So I maybe like to see a little bit more detail about exactly what we mean when we say food access.
Anything more?
No, that's all I had, Commissioner Bosher. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Colling.
So I wrote down a few things here. Relative to the COVID-19 considerations, declining retail like Commissioner Tomacek talked about, I think is a big one because I think that there's different kinds of businesses that we're going to need to start considering and start promoting in order to replace some of that. But I think it just needs to be evaluated a little bit more closely because, you know, obviously, that's been a big hit for the city, and I'm sure it's going to be a big hit when it comes to tax time as well. I thought the other thing that I heard is this is not so much related to the COVID. It's more related to just demographics. 57% increase in the 60-plus population. That's huge. I mean, it makes me wonder what, what are we doing to target that and to support that kind of an increase in demographics? So I, I just want to make sure that we're really looking at that. And I'm sure you have, Andrew, and I'm sure that just as, as the staff in general has. I think that's just a big one. I don't really have a whole lot more to add. I think it's a very comprehensive review. And I think this is, you've done a great job, and I'm really happy to see all these details. It looks like a great comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dunn, would you have any questions or any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do just have one, or, or a couple, actually. One question and one comment. The, the, the question regarding medical care facilities is there is a facility in Westminster that is that is standing empty right now. The one that's across from the Butterfly Pavilion at Westminster. The one that's across from the Butterfly Pavilion at Westminster, Westminster Boulevard and 104th Avenue. Do, does anyone in the city know anything about the possibility of getting that up and running again? Or what, what is the, what is the, what is the situation with that building now?
Commissioner Dunn, this is Andrew Spurgeon again. I'm, I might let John McConnell weigh in on this, but we did receive an inquiry recently about bringing that, that building back into use as a hospital, and I'll, I'll let John add to my comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, Andrew's correct. We did receive an inquiry probably about two months ago regarding the adaptive reuse of that property, the conversion of that to a hospital. I identified that there were no zoning issues or planning issues, ODP issues that would prohibit them from doing that. At this time, we haven't seen any applications move forward on it just yet.
I see. Thank you, John. My comment was with regarding the, the, the food access question that, that Commissioner McConnell brought up, and it was, it was just that there are a number of delivery services, some run by farms themselves, some run for a collection of farms, that could be effective in getting people food if they need it. My wife and I use the, the, if I can use a name here, the Miller Farm. I don't know if, if people are familiar with that. It's just close by up north of us here. Farms like that are, are in the process of, of getting food to a lot of people, and that's something that, that the, that, that the city authorities could possibly use to get in touch with those people and, and to help, help people who need to get food. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. I guess it's my turn, and I'd like to say first off that I would echo several of the other commissioners' comments on healthcare capacity. I think we need to really give that a hard look and possibly improve that situation considering which direction this virus goes. We could have a real problem there, so we may need to look at that further. The other thing I'd like to say is that I looked at a lot of the materials that were created by, I assume Jennifer and Andrew, and I want to say that they were very well done. The graphs were easy to read, and it was a very thorough examination of the problems we're facing and some of the opportunities we have. So thank you for that. Very, a lot of information. I plan to go back and look at it again, and I will keep it for future reference. And other than that, I have no further comments and would ask that if there are any commissioners who have thought of anything else they'd like to say, please come forward now.
And Chair Bosscher, this is Andrew. We do have one more slide.
Okay.
Perhaps I could finish that out, and then we could have any final comments from the commissioners.
Very good.
Matt, if you could click forward one slide. Thank you. So this is our general timeline for the work ahead. We are possibly having to reconsider our timelines, given that our public engagement has been slowed down due to the pandemic response and some higher priority activities that the city is doing in that arena right now. But we did come tonight to hear some of the feedback from the planning commission, so I appreciate all those comments. I did take careful notes of what each of you said. Our next steps will be further drafting of the plan document and probably some follow-up discussions from the feedback we received tonight. We will be also considering the results of the water demand testing and working across departments and the city staff on implications of that testing for what it means for the comprehensive plan and the water supply plan. We do want to go out to the public in whatever form that may be in COVID-19, whether it's online only, or perhaps if there's a way to have in-person events later this year, that would be nice. And then, of course, we will come back to the Planning Commission, probably for some additional presentations prior to adoption, as well as engaging with the City Council, probably in a study session format, and then coming back for adoption. So that concludes my presentation, and we can certainly accept any final additional comments that the commission has to offer.
Yeah, Commissioner Bosscher, this is Joe McConnell one last time. So it was, I heard what Commissioner Colling had to say about the older demographic, and I was sitting here and I'm looking at healthcare capacity, and what I'm about to say is based on, loosely based on about nine years of experience in management consulting in healthcare. And so the capacity we talked about, there's like the, the everyday capacity that you need to handle the normal stuff and the routine things and all of these things that go through the doctors' offices and clinics and hospitals, et cetera. Then we have the, the oh-my-God capacity, which is what we, what we saw for a brief couple of months, but we have the risk of it happening forward. So they're really two different things. So when we talk about healthcare capacity, it's not necessarily that we don't have enough hospital beds, period. It's we may not have enough hospital beds if the following were to happen. And also, part of what, you know, healthcare organizations have done is we saw them popping up like Walgreens. We saw like the, the empty building that Commissioner Dunn referred to, right? We have this clinic pop up, and the purpose of the clinics was to draw people into their, their bigger hospitals in, at Anshutes and in the downtown Denver area. So it's, it's actually a, a way more complex issue than we don't have enough healthcare capacity. And then when you consider that the older demographic in conjunction with all of this, I think it even gets a little dicier and a little bit stickier to resolve and figure out. That's all. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Any other commissioners with a final comment? I would like to make a final comment, and that is that I commend the staff for starting this process two years ago or even more. If we hadn't done that, or if you hadn't done that, we would not have the information, and now it would be much harder to get. So that's very good thing. I'm glad you started that early. And I also want to say that the information I saw on the presentations that were sent earlier kind of showed me how well-informed the citizens of Westminster really are, and that was encouraging. So I think we've got a good base to work from here, and I appreciate all this information. Any other comments from staff?
This is Andrew again. I just wanted to thank you all again for your time and your feedback tonight, and by all means, if you think of something later on, feel free to email us with any additional comment.
One last call for comments from commissioners. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Enjoy this winter weather.